Good evening. It is a multi-billion dollar lawsuit against some of the biggest social media companies in the world filed by four area school boards.
At issue, just how damaging social media may be to students and who should be held responsible. CTV's Janice Golding joins us live tonight with the details. Janice.
Hi Natalie. Four of Ontario's biggest school boards are taking on the biggest social media companies in the world suing them for four and a half billion dollars in what's believed to be the first case of its kind in Canada. All you have to do is watch these students walking into school this morning to see just how glued they are to their smartphones.
It's affecting all the, you know, the kids and even myself now when I'm home, I'm just playing with that one.
For sure, yes, yeah, it is harmful.
I think everybody's addicted to these social media and devices. I think we need to take a break once in a while.
They're always on the phone, on the TikTok, yeah.
Do you think it's harmful?
It is.
And it's so alarming to educators, they're taking on the tech giants who have created what they call addictive social media products, saying they're disrupting student learning.
Forty-five percent of kids are spending roughly five hours a day on social media.
The Toronto Public and Catholic School Boards, along with the Peel District and the Ottawa Carlton District School Boards, have launched legal action against the companies who operate Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, and TikTok.
We have a number of social media tech giants who have been knowingly creating products that are disrupting the way students learn, the way they think, the way they behave.
The boards say students are experiencing an attention, learning, and mental health crisis due to prolific and compulsive use of social media.
These technologies are addictive and this has a cost to society. And there are other organizations, institutions, governments, individuals, families that have to bear the cost. And so I kind of thought this was inevitable.
Still today, the premier criticized the board, saying he disagreed with their decision to litigate.
Let's focus on the kids, not about this other nonsense that they're looking to fight in court. What are they spending on lawyer fees to go after these massive companies that have endless cash to fight this?
But the boards say these massive companies have created massive harms.
The algorithmic designs underlying these social media products, based on the scientific data that we're seeing, it does affect how the neural circuitry works, how the brain actually works, especially in the case of adolescents.
Creating more work for educators with increased IT costs and demand for in-school mental health programming and personnel. And Duncan Embry also says what's significant to note is there is similar litigation taking place in the United States with more than 500 school districts there involved in similar claims. Reporting live from Janice Golding, now back to Natalie.
Okay, thanks, Janice. Police in St. Catharines have charged a man with two counts of first-degree murder in the deaths of his parents. Niagara Regional Police say 43-year-old Sean Owens was arrested and charged today. Investigators say he is the son of Celine Marie and Harold Owens. The couple was found dead in their Elma Street home on Monday. Neighbors say the pair had lived there for nearly 30 years and were well-liked in the community. Sean Owens is scheduled to appear in court tomorrow for a bail hearing.
A man wanted in a double homicide at a vaudeville nightclub two years ago has been arrested south of the border. On July 23rd of 2022, police were called to a shooting at the ATL Lounge on Highway 7. Two people died of their injuries while a third survived. A Canada-wide warrant was issued for 29-year-old Kensworth out in Francis of Mississauga. And nearly two years later, he was taken into custody on Tuesday in Hartford, Connecticut. He's been charged with two counts of first-degree murder and one count of attempted murder.
Also tonight, police say they have arrested a suspect in a series of vandalism incidents believed to be motivated by hate. Between late January and as recently as this week, police say a retail business near Dufferin and Yorkdale was vandalized several times with anti-Semitic graffiti left in the washrooms. Police say they have arrested 80-year-old Rashid Kerr-Malley on seven counts of mischief under $5,000.
A new report finds officers in York region have the lowest number of use-of-force incidents in the GTA. The report from the York Regional Police Services Board finds despite an increased number of interactions with the public, police use-of-force incidents remain the lowest in the GTA. Those officers had more than 400,000 interactions with the public last year, with 265 of them resulting in use of force. The report also revealed a 180% increase in encounters with people armed with guns.
Delays in the justice system were top of mind today at Queen's Park.
Survivors of violent crime and the opposition are calling on the government to do more to prevent charges from being dropped because of delays. CTV's Queens Park Bureau Chief Siobhan Morris joins us live with more. Siobhan.
Well, there was anger and tears from two women today at Queen's Park. They're calling on the government to stop making excuses and to make real change so that more people don't find themselves in the same place they are.
I am a survivor of domestic violence and a victim of the Canadian justice system.
Kate Alexander's ex allegedly tried to kill her, but she never got a chance at justice. The case thrown out because it couldn't be heard within a time limit set by the charter.
I was told my attempted murder is not a priority. And despite having a new billion-dollar courthouse, the government has not allocated the funds to staff it properly.
A new courthouse in downtown Toronto where the trial of the man who Emily Agar says sexually assaulted her was scheduled last July. After two days unable to go ahead because there wasn't a staffed courtroom.
I testified and was cross-examined and then they, the judge said that he wanted to hear the rest of the trial out, but the next available dates were in November.
Beyond the deadline for the case to be heard, the charges against Agar's alleged attacker stayed.
Enough is enough. Stop the excuses and make real change.
The opposition is urging the attorney general to put his money where his mouth is.
Tough-on-crime rhetoric from the government means absolutely nothing if the courts are understaffed and cases are tossed out.
Doug Downey insists the government has invested more, hired more.
Be it Crown prosecutors, victim witness assistants, court employees, court staff, bail vetters, Mr. Speaker, it is incredible the amount of resources this government is putting into the system.
But Agar and Alexander know their stories are not unique.
There are other victims of this broken legal system who, like us, will live with this pain forever.
The premier was asked about court delays at a news conference in Ottawa this morning. He repeated that more money is being invested into the court system, but he also talked about overload because of more auto theft cases. Reporting live from Queens Park, I'm Siobhan Morris. Michelle, back to you. Thank you, Siobhan. One person is in hospital following a fire in the West End. This blaze broke out at a two-story home near Browns Line and Lake Shore. Toronto Fire says four people were able to escape on their own. The person who was hurt suffered non-life-threatening injuries.
And another person has been taken to hospital with non-life-threatening injuries after a car crashed into a TTC bus shelter overnight near Markham Road and Finch Avenue. Both the bus shelter and a hydro pole were damaged in the crash.
Average or middle-of-the-pack offensive team. George Springer lifts it to left, it's gone.
How about that? Baseball is back, something Jays fans have been waiting for, a sign that summer is on its way. The Jays are starting their season in Tampa Bay today. They won't make their first appearance here at home for another 10 days.
After a wild card playoff elimination last year, the Toronto Blue Jays are now focused on the new season ahead. CTV's Beth McDonnell has been talking to Jays fans all day long, and Beth, they must be excited.
Natalie, this is a big day for baseball and tradition. We've been meeting people downtown, big fans, who make sure to catch the season opener.
Eyes are peeled to TV sets as the Toronto Blue Jays play their season opener in Tampa Bay against the Rays.
I attend every game. I've always been a Blue Jays fan ever since I was a little kid dating back to Exhibition Stadium, and it's just something that's a part of me.
We always do opening day. We've got our crew here, we've got our kids here. It's a great time. We love baseball, we love the Jays.
The Jays begin their return with a 10-game road trip, which includes stops in New York to play against the Yankees and in Houston to play against the Astros. Both opponents could make Toronto start a tough one.
It's all against teams that either made the playoffs or missed by like one game. And so for the Blue Jays, we're going to find out early on, can they be better than who they were last year?
The team made few changes in the offseason. Some of the Blue Jays' biggest fans are using a little reverse psychology to set up the season.
I'm expecting this team to do the opposite of the last two years. Last two years, they were favorites, didn't do well. This year, they're kind of underdogs, and I think they're going to do well.
The road trip will also allow for renovations to continue at Rogers Centre, so the stadium will be ready for the home opener.
I saw the rentals last year, I thought it was amazing, and I'm looking forward to the other things they're doing inside.
Trontonians are feeling optimistic.
I hope they win the World Series because I know I've been to the game and they haven't been good, but I love them anyways, and I hope they win. I'm really rooting for them this year.
Actually, I'm very excited, of course, and they're probably going to win. I hope so.
With hope for a winning season, hi. Good news, the Jays are up eight to two over the Rays in the bottom of the seventh. The home opener is here at Rogers Centre, Monday, April 8th. Reporting live, I'm Beth McDonnell. Michelle, back to you.
That is great news. Go Jays! Thank you, Beth. And you know, spring is here when baseball is underway. And as we take a live look outside, a lovely evening, the conditions with blue sky as we embark, well, for many, on a long weekend. Jessica Smith joins us now for a look at the current conditions. And we're into a nice stretch, but tomorrow's a bit of a curveball.
It is. We do have some cloud cover rolling and the chance of maybe an afternoon shower. It's really as we get into Saturday night that we watch for a little more active weather, but it won't rain on our parade by any means, quite literally, with some of the Easter parades taking place this weekend. High pressure though for today, sunshine, it has been beautiful, a little breezy, but it's a southwesterly wind, so I'll take it. Temperature-wise, right around southern Ontario, between five and about seven degrees. Over towards the island through Pearson, relatively comfortable, still a breezy southwesterly wind, but it's manageable, right? Tonight dropping down to minus three, a fairly clear night ahead of us. But coming up, I'll break down the Easter weekend forecast, so you can spend some time outside if you want to. All those details in a moment. Right now, I'll send it back over to Natalie.
Thanks, Jas. At Toronto City Hall today, councillors advanced a plan to reimburse the churches and community groups that helped house asylum seekers last year. As the city pushed Ottawa to provide more funding for refugees, it was forced to turn away claimants from municipal shelters. Many ended up sleeping on the street until churches and other organizations offered to take them in. Now that the federal government has committed to pay the city back, a staff report calls for those nonprofit groups to be made whole.
We know that was unconscionable and unacceptable in a city like ours and to again reiterate the respect and appreciation for black-serving, black-led churches, community organizations who saw this crisis and stepped up and stepped in where I will say again and again, they shouldn't have to.
Previous payments only covered about a third of the organization's estimated costs as of late September. The Economic and Community Development Committee voted today to send the matter over to city council for final approval next month.
A garbage truck caught on camera belching black smoke has lit a fire among those debating whether the city of Toronto should keep its curbside collection partially private or return it to city control.
As CTV's John Woodward reports, a city union says the video is evidence of a major problem. The company says it's just trash talk.
The garbage truck in this video is green, but what's coming out of it is a lot of black. The video, shot in mid-February, shows a GFL environmental truck making rounds near Wilson and Keel, shot by a concerned citizen who confronts the driver.
How come you don't fix your truck?
The driver seems to acknowledge his truck has an issue but keeps going.
You can't have a vehicle like that out on our roads, smoking like that.
Councillor James Pasternak says that truck should have been parked immediately.
We expect all of our subcontractors, especially in solid wage, to have safe, well-maintained vehicles.
The truck is run by GFL, which has a contract to pick up garbage and recycling for half the city.
When it comes to curbside collection, Toronto is a city divided. If you're over here on the east side of Yong, your garbage is likely picked up by city crews. Over there on the west side, that's likely GFL.
That contract is up for renewal in 2026, with some councillors saying it's time to bring it back to city control.
Our city workers basically can do the job just as well or better as the private sector, and you have more control.
The smoking truck has the city's outside workers' union fired up, telling CTV News the video and images released today show that our environment will continue to be harmed by relying on profit-focused, private-sector operators. GFL told CTV News it typically fixes trucks quickly, and the city of Toronto confirmed it had been, saying complaints like this are rare. Pasternak says it may be unfair to judge a company on one belching truck.
Performance seems to be good. We can't keep jumping back from in-source, outsource, in-source, outsource.
He says if GFL has the option to send out another truck in that condition, they should refuse. John Woodward, CTV News.
Meanwhile, the city has moved one step closer to permanently allowing drinking in some Toronto parks. A council committee approved a staff report today. If passed by council as a whole, it'll make the initial pilot project at 27 parks last year permanent. It will also ensure drinking is permitted in at least one park in each municipal ward. Councillor Paula Fletcher said concerns about relaxing the rules have been overblown.
People were worried that the sky would fall in these 27 wards and the garbage would be flowing everywhere in the park and there would be empty bottles lying around and beer cans everywhere. It would just be a really difficult moment. It turns out it didn't happen in that way.
A city survey found 92% of visitors surveyed at parks where the pilot was underway were in support of the plan. If approved by council, a more permanent policy could be in place by the summer.
The annual sunshine list is out, revealing which public sector employees earned more than $100,000 a year. This year, as for the past several years, the highest-paid person on the list is Kenneth Hartwick, the president and CEO of Ontario Power Generation, with a salary of just over The top five salaries on the list are all for staff employed by Ontario Power Generation. The list was first introduced in 1996, and the $100,000 threshold has not changed since. The government says there are no plans to increase it despite inflation. Less than 5,000 people made the list back in 1996. This year, there are more than 300,000.
Also today, the province revealed this year's planned increase to the minimum wage. As of October 1st, hourly pay will jump from $16.55 an hour to $17.20 for most workers. For students, it'll be a dollar less at $16.20. That works out to a 3.9% increase from the current minimum wage, based on the provincial Consumer Price Index.
As Ottawa sets a cap on international student arrivals, the Ford Government is laying out its strategy for allocating spots in Ontario. Applicants now need a letter of attestation from the province to qualify for a study permit. The Ministry of Colleges and Universities says 96% of spaces will go to publicly assisted institutions. The remaining 4% will be split between language schools, private universities, and other institutions. Career colleges will be completely shut out. The province says it will prioritize programs in high-demand areas like the skilled trades and health human resources. Well, the federal government plans to expand $10 a day childcare.
We received another preview today of next month's budget that will include more than $1 billion in loans and grants. CTV's Annie Bergeron Oliver reports.
The rollout of the federal childcare program hasn't gone quite as smoothly as the federal government would have hoped, with waitlists growing and some daycares who are enrolled saying they're now on the brink of closure. Today, the Prime Minister toured a daycare in Vancouver and announced a slew of new measures he says will help support children and families at every stage of life. To make spaces more available, Ottawa will launch a new childcare expansion loan program, making $1 billion in low-cost loans and $60 million in non-repayable grants available to some childcare centers. It's also offering $48 million worth of student loan forgiveness for rural and remote early childhood educators and investing $10 million over two years to train more early childcare educators.
We stand strongly in favor of childcare and why we are working so closely with the provinces that are excited about building this, but also holding to account the provinces that are not moving as fast or as responsibly as they should. But this billion dollars in investment in childcare is going to make a huge difference in the number of spaces right across the country.
Today's childcare announcement comes one day after Trudeau revealed new support for renters. This almost daily release of affordability announcements is all part of a new communication strategy the Liberals are employing to try and better market items in the April 16 budget.
In order to deliver the big benefits of the program, which is higher female labor force participation, higher revenues in tax revenues because people are working, higher economic growth because people are working, these only come if there are spaces for people to put kids and then go to work.
A national daycare program was a flagship promise for the Liberals in the 2021 election, and experts say it will remain a hot issue in the upcoming election. Annie Bergeron Oliver, CTV News, Ottawa.
Meanwhile, two of seven premiers opposed to the federal carbon tax appeared before House of Commons Committee today.
Albertans and all Canadians need common sense, compassion, and responsible government to prevail. That's why I'm urging you today to heed the calls of Canadians across the country and suspend the increase in the carbon tax on April 1st.
For what it is intended to achieve, is it achieving that? Because what was this unintended consequence? What it's going to cause on affordability of every issue from groceries to right down the supply chain? Was that the intended consequence? And if it was, it's a poorly implemented process?
The Prime Minister is challenging opponents of carbon pricing to come up with a better solution. Today, New Brunswick's premier suggested one option would be to eventually ship liquid natural gas to Europe as an alternative to coal, but currently the province does not have a supply of the gas.
A judge has ruled that a man will go to trial after a bus slammed into a Montreal area daycare last year. Two children were killed and six others were injured in the February 2023 incident. Following a preliminary hearing this week, the judge decided there is sufficient evidence to send the case to trial. Pierre-Ni Saint-Amand has been charged with first-degree murder. The former Laval Transit driver will also stand trial on seven other charges, including attempted murder and aggravated assault. The case returns to court on April 11th.
The UN's top court has told Israel it must take action without delay to allow more food and other aid into the Gaza Strip. Today's legally binding order by the International Court of Justice includes the opening of additional land crossings. South Africa has been seeking more provisional measures, including a ceasefire to address starvation in the territory. The United Nations has reported 100% of the population is at a severe level of food insecurity. Israel urged the court not to issue new orders. It has been instructed to report back in a month on the implementation.
In Ukraine, southern and eastern regions of the country were attacked overnight, injuring more than a dozen people. A residential area in the southern region was struck by drones launched by Russia. Seven buildings were damaged. Ukrainian air defense systems intercepted 26 out of 28 weapons launched in the latest attacks. Ukraine says the enemy also launched five missiles overnight. Officials in the Black Sea city of Odessa say three missile and drone attacks were repelled.
The governor of Maryland is seeking $60 million in immediate federal aid following this week's bridge collapse. The bodies of two men have been recovered following Tuesday's tragedy in Baltimore. Divers will resume searching for the remaining four workers once the debris is cleared. The devastation at the site is extensive. After a powerless cargo ship hit the bridge, two people were rescued from the water. Cranes on barges are en route to help remove the wreckage.
In France, the lower House of Parliament adopted a bill today that would ban discrimination over the texture, length, color, or style of someone's hair.
It will give strength to people to be able to answer when they are asked to straighten their hair. They can say, no, this is not legal. You cannot expect that from me. It has nothing to do with my professional competence.
The bill's authors hope the measure sends a message of support to people who have faced hostility in the workplace because of their hair. The draft law echoes legislation in more than 20 U.S. states.
The King delivered a pre-recorded message today to a traditional pre-Easter church service. He did not attend as he continues treatment for cancer.
This act of worship here in Worcester Cathedral reminds me of the pledge I made at the beginning of the coronation service, to follow Christ's example, not to be served, but to serve. That I have always tried to do and continue to do with my whole heart.
The monarch stressed the importance of friendship and acts of caring during his message. He was represented by his wife at the annual Royal Monday service.
Camilla presented bags of specially minted coins to people being honored for public service. There were 75 women and 75 men, a number dictated by the king's age. The service dates back to the year 600 and commemorates the Last Supper, when Jesus washed the feet of his disciples as an act of service and humility. The king is due to join other members of the royal family on Sunday for a scaled-down Easter service at Windsor Castle.
In Rome, Pope Francis carried out a Holy Thursday ritual meant to emphasize his vocation of service and humility.
They keep your souls in me.
The pontiff washed and kissed the feet of 12 women inmates at a prison. Many of them wept as the pope gently poured water over one bare foot and patted it dry with a small towel. He finished the gesture by kissing each foot, often looking up to the woman with a smile. The pontiff revolutionized the ritual back in 2013 to include women and people of other faiths among the 12.
Here at home, Canada Post has released a stamp to commemorate Eid al-Fitr. It features cookies called Mamelus that are eaten by Muslims around the world during times of celebration. The stamp was issued today so it can be used to send greetings before the festival in April. Eid al-Fitr marks the end of Ramadan, a holy month during which many Muslims fast from sunrise to sunset. Canada Post says the stamp can also be used to celebrate Eid al-Ara in June, which marks the end of the Hajj pilgrimage to Mecca.
And as we head into the Easter weekend, attractions like the Toronto Zoo, Ripley's Aquarium, and the ROM will be open tomorrow, but there are several Good Friday closures to keep in mind. Government offices, banks, and library branches won't be opening their doors, same with LCBO and beer stores. Most grocery stores, pharmacies, and malls will also be closed. Note, the Eaton Center will open for reduced hours of 11 to 7:00, and the TTC will run on a holiday schedule while Go Transit operates on a Sunday schedule. The long-term construction that just started on the Gardner Expressway will be paused from Good Friday through to Easter Sunday. Coming up, it won't be long now until golf season is back in full swing. The city teeing up its public courses will tell you when you can hit the greens after this short break.
I'm Pat Foran, coming up on Consumer Alert. If you're planning renovations that involve digging on your property, you need to call before you dig. A Brampton homeowner was shocked when his contractor cut a power line. Now he's been told he owes $27,000 to fix it. Tell us that story just ahead.
And the above-seasonal weather trend that really carried us through the entire winter season is spreading into spring as well. We saw a daytime high above seasonal yesterday and again today. Heading into the long weekend, it is going to be fantastic thanks to high pressure really settling in, but there is a little active weather on the way as well. Coming up, a full look at your language forecast. All that coming up after the break.
Welcome back. Well, you may have heard the phrase "call before you dig," and it's important to keep that in mind if you're doing any work on your property.
If you accidentally damage a gas pipe, power line, or communications cable, it can be expensive to repair, not to mention a safety hazard. Pat Foran is here with a consumer alert. Pat?
Thanks, Michelle and Natalie. A Brampton man was having a garage built on his property, and his contractor cut into a power line. The utility agreed to repair the line twice, but now says it must be replaced, and the homeowner has to pay $27,000 to fix it. At Paul Willis's Brampton home, he has a temporary power line for Hydro running above ground on his property.
Comes down here from the pole, goes all the way up here, all the way up behind the garage.
The line has multiple splices before connecting to his house.
This is the temporary line coming into the mirror. Yep, which was only supposed to be there for 30 days. How long's it been? A year and a half.
His underground Hydro was cut when he hired a contractor to build his garage.
He was not as cautious as he should have been.
When the line was severed, Elektra Utilities repaired it twice. When it failed the third time, he was told it would have to be replaced at his expense.
They want $27,000. I've got to pay a contractor to run it the final 80 feet, and that's about $5,000.
Before you dig, you're supposed to contact Ontario One Call. It's an agency that works with utilities to make sure when digging, you don't damage underground gas pipes, communications networks, or power lines.
The whole process is to make sure that when you do dig, when you break ground, be it with your shovel or with a major piece of equipment, you're aware of the underground infrastructure, you don't hit it.
Complicating Willis's situation is that he actually contacted Ontario One Call, but his contractor didn't follow their instructions.
I've sued the contractor. The problem I've got is he ignored the suit. He's ignored my lawyer, he's ignored me.
CTV News reached out to Elektra, and a spokesperson said the existing line was damaged by the customer's third-party contractor. Our crews addressed the issue with an emergency connection. We provided the customer with an estimate of $27,000 to replace the damaged line.
Your client has to pay for it, have them send us the $27,000, which is what they wanted to bring to the corner of the house, or we're going to shut the power off.
Willis feels the line to his property needed to be upgraded and replaced and doesn't feel he should have to pay the entire cost and is holding out hope for a compromise. If you're going to dig on your property, you need to contact Ontario One Call. It's free and it's the law. You do it online, so it's really clicked before you dig. They'll check to try and make sure you don't hit anything. On your side, I'm Pat Foran.
If you have a consumer story idea, email us at alert@ctv.ca.
Well, if you've been waiting all winter to get back out onto the green, good news for golfers tonight. All five of Toronto's city-run courses are teed up to open this Saturday. Golfers can book their tee times up to seven days in advance. By the way, a record-high 240,000 rounds were played at city courses. By the way, a record-high 240,000 rounds were played at city courses last year. It was a good year for golf last year. This is so exciting. We're talking golf, we're talking baseball, the hills are alive.
Yeah, it's time to polish off the clubs and pull out the 100 balls that we're going to lose this season. Exactly. But you know what? Golf courses stayed open so late last year because it was so warm, and they're opening up a little bit early. If you're going to golf this weekend, especially on Saturday, do it early in the day. There's some maybe late-day showers. There are some hardy golfers or golfers out there, but maybe do it earlier in the day if you can. Weather is brought to you by Trane, the most reliable heating and cooling brand. It's hard to stop a train. The forecast today, the forecast tomorrow, really kind of getting you into the spring spirit. I feel like we had that bit of blast of snow, and it kind of brought us back into that wintry feeling that we didn't really have through the entire winter season. But now we're really settling into a beautiful forecast as we step in towards what is going to be a busy weekend for many. We're sitting at eight here in the city right now, nine through Windsor, nine in Ottawa, even up through Timmins, Mussetny, between minus one and minus five, relatively mild, all things considered. Tonight, we're not too far off the seasonal mark. We should be at minus one, we'll sit around minus three. And overall, a fairly light kind of southerly flow to the wind will help things feel not so frigid. We do have a slight wind chill, but maybe by about two degrees. And really, right across southern Ontario, it is a fairly seasonal night. Tomorrow, pretty spot on for where we should be, with maybe the exception of Waterloo, they should be at seven, they'll be at four. But really and truly, we're looking at a beautiful day ahead of us with a ton of sunshine. And then we watch for a little bit of cloud cover to roll in. But overall, I'm not complaining. The bulk of that low that we had continues to push its way east. Another trough is kind of extending down into northern Ontario, bringing a chance of some light snow. But for us here in the south, high pressure, keeping it nice and clear. As we head through the rest of our evening, not much in the way of any cloud cover. We start off the day tomorrow with a decent amount of sunshine in the city. And really, east of the city gets the bulk of the sunshine to start the day tomorrow and into the afternoon. We will see some cloud cover off and on, maybe the chance of a good light drizzle. But really, if it comes to fruition at all, brief in nature. Getting into our Saturday, we start off not too bad, all things considered. A little sunshine out there. But it's as we head in towards the afternoon that we watch for the chances of showers to roll in. So again, for those golfers, if you can get out in the first half of the day, it's probably better, drier anyways. The chance of maybe a little mixing overnight, but really and truly, because it's so mild, it just kind of passes through. And then the next day, the sunshine returns. Throughout your weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, at or just above seasonal as we head throughout the entire Easter weekend. Getting into Monday, if you're off, if you're not off, doesn't matter. Beautiful, 10 degrees for that daytime high, staying above that seasonal norm once again. As we step into the month of April, a few showers. But you know what that means, May flowers, as the saying goes. But really, as we settle into next week, it will be beautiful. Natalie?
Sounds good to me. Thanks, Jas.
Thanks.
Also tonight, Les Mis is back. The Tony Award-winning musical that has captivated millions worldwide returns to the Toronto stage. We will take you live to the red carpet before the curtain rises.
A new collaboration between four Toronto hospitals is helping to reduce the significant backlog of gynecological surgeries.
As CTV's health reporter Pauline Chan explains, the partnership could make a big difference when it comes to prioritizing patients.
I had to fight for it.
Since her teens, Flora Kesten suffered from years of pain and heavy monthly bleeding. But even after being diagnosed with endometriosis and finally being approved for surgery, Kesten faced another hurdle, a long waitlist for the operation.
We already had quite a significant backlog even before the pandemic. And then coupled with the pandemic and/or closures, it really expanded. And some of us that do more advanced subspecialized procedures have even longer wait times.
How big was the backlog?
It's certainly in the thousands, a specific number I wouldn't be able to, wouldn't be able to give you, because the number changes all the time.
But under a new collaboration brought in this January, four Toronto hospitals, Women's College, Mount Sinai, Sunnybrook, and Humber River, are coordinating efforts to optimize use of operating facilities and reduce the growing backlog. And while collaborations like this exist for other types of surgery, like joint replacements, it had never been done for non-cancerous gynecological surgeries. Dr. Jamie Croft says patients coming in are prioritized for surgery.
Certain cases would be deemed higher priority based on the indication for surgery. And then it will also be based on how long they've been waiting.
And while endometriosis is not considered life-threatening, Kesten says the pain was debilitating in every aspect of her life.
I felt taken down and my body working against me for so long. I felt like my body was deteriorating.
But after her surgery last month, she feels tremendous relief.
Kind of peaceful in a way. It feels really good that other people as well will be able to get this surgery, these types of treatments.
We're very excited to be able to complete over 300 surgeries in just that first two months across the collaborative.
Now, the money for this collaboration runs out at the end of March, so they're hoping for additional funding from the Ministry of Health to extend this program. Pauline Chan, CTV News.
Well, it is an iconic musical making its return to Toronto with a red carpet gala tonight.
Les Misérables has been wowing audiences around the world for more than 40 years. And tonight, it's back in this city for its seventh appearance. Our Andrew Case is live tonight on the red carpet with more. Hey, Andrea.
Hey, good evening. You said that so well, Les Misérables. Yes, that is how it is pronounced, because it is French. To a lot of people, it's Les Mis. It has been a decade since it's been here in Toronto, and it's here for months, so Toronto audiences can get ready to be wowed once again with this Tony Award-winning production. I spoke to a couple of the cast members. Let's start with Fantine, and her name is Hayley Dorch. Why did you want to do it, and how's it going?
I mean, wow, it's such an iconic role, as you said. And so when I got the chance to audition for Fantine, after I originally came in for Epping, and I was like, yes. I get to, I find myself always being the motherly characters. Maybe it's because I'm tall. But I think that it's been such a whirlwind adventure, but it has meant so much to me. And I auditioned for this tour when I was 19. I just turned 22 a couple of months ago. And it has been such an excellent story of me growing up and also with this show and these people. And it's such an amazing message that means so much to so many people.
How do you not cry every night?
I do cry every night. Are you kidding? I definitely do cry every night. I mean, it's such a sad, miserable story. And, you know, you really feel for these characters. I just feel so bad for Fantine, but her story is so strong and persistent and beautiful.
This is a role of a lifetime.
A role of a lifetime.
A role of a lifetime. How are you handling it, Nick? And what can the Toronto audiences expect?
You know, Toronto audiences can expect this energy from the cast. We have been waiting so long to bring this show to Toronto. It has not played Toronto in 10 years. So there is this energy that we are all so excited to be here. And it's really spilling out off of our stage into the audience. And audiences are embracing this show, especially after the pandemic. We're inviting audiences back into the theater. It's something that we all have been dreaming of doing. And for me personally, I've been playing this role for a very long time, since 2017. So now to get to play this role again and to bring it here is the icing on the cake.
Who is Jean Valjean?
Jean Valjean is at the heart. He is a man that just wants to make his world better. And, you know, he's put in prison for stealing a loaf of bread because he's looking out for, you know, his sister's son. And his life is hard at the beginning, until he's shown redemption. And then, and then it becomes about making his life and the lives around him better. And I connect with that so deeply. And now more than ever, because during the pandemic, my wife and I had a daughter. And so, and they travel with me out on the road. And so now that I get to feel that heart outside the body as Jean Valjean, to feel what that protective spirit over this adopted daughter Cosette, it makes the show completely different for me in a great way.
Okay, so the folks you're looking at right now, this part of the ensemble, they should be actually getting ready to get on stage, because the show starts in about 40 minutes. Opening night tonight in Toronto. And I think it's going to be a pretty good show. But we'll find out tonight, 11:30. We'll have more from the red carpet here at the Princess of Wales Theatre. Reporting for CTV News, Michelle, I'll send it back to you.
Look forward to it. Thank you, Andrea. And after the break, sticker shock for the Easter Bunny, just in time for the annual egg hunt. Chocolate prices set to soar. The details coming up.
45% of kids are spending roughly five hours a day on social media.
Updating our top stories, four school boards in the GTA launch a multi-billion-dollar lawsuit against several social media giants. The boards claim the social media services are addictive and have disrupted student learning. Similar lawsuits have been launched in the United States.
Niagara Police have arrested a son in the deaths of his parents that police now say were homicides. The bodies of 75-year-old Harold and Celine Marie Owens were found in their St. Catherine's home on Monday. Today, police announced their son, 43-year-old Sean Owens, has been charged with two counts of first-degree murder.
Blue Jays were basically an average or middle-of-the-pack offensive team. George Springer lifts it to left, it's gone.
And the Toronto Blue Jays take flight. The regular season begins in Tampa Bay with an 8-2 victory over the Rays. The team's home opener is April 8 at Rogers Centre.
Remember to keep up today, day and night, through our website, ctvenewstoronto.ca, and by downloading the CTV News app. And if you have a news tip, photos, or video of breaking news, let us know.
In business, despite anxieties about a possible slowdown in Canada's economy, the latest economic data showed surprising strength. BNN Bloomberg's Amber Kenmore has the latest in business.
The Canadian economy expanded more than expected in January. Gross domestic product rose by 0.6%, led by a rebound in education after strikes in Quebec ended. Now, Staskin also estimated that the strength continued in February, with the economy expanding 0.4%. That puts the economy on track for expansion of 3.5% in the first quarter of this year, much better than what the Bank of Canada expected back in January. Now, while this means the bank may not be in a rush to cut interest rates, one economist at CIBC says because inflation is cooling, there is room for gradual reductions starting in June. Sam Bankman-Fried was given a 25-year prison sentence for his role in the downfall of cryptocurrency exchange FTX. He faced a possible sentence of 110 years behind bars after being convicted last year of seven offenses, including fraud and conspiracy. Just before the sentence was handed down, Bankman-Fried gave a statement in court saying he was sorry about what happened at every stage. The maker of SkiDoo's saw its sales fall as mild winter weather hurt sales of snowmobiles. Sales at BRP Incorporated fell 13% in the most recent quarter. The company's forecast also suggested the weakness could continue, in part because higher interest rates have reduced consumers' willingness to spring for recreational vehicles. Now, let's take a look at some of the closing market numbers for today. The Canadian dollar was up modestly, just under 74 cents U.S., while it was an up day for crude oil, advancing by nearly $2 per barrel. Canadian oil prices, meanwhile, edged a little bit lower, at around $68 per barrel. And the TSX closed at a record high, edging up 60 points. That's the latest in business. I'm Amber Kenmore in the BNN Bloomberg newsroom.
The business report is brought to you by Canadian Western Bank, the bank built for business.
Your Easter celebrations might be a little more bittersweet this year if you are buying chocolate. Supply challenges out of Ghana and the Ivory Coast have led to soaring cocoa prices, outpacing broader food inflation. Those West African countries are facing catastrophically low harvest this year thanks to a range of factors, including climate change, illegal gold mining, and disease. Cocoa futures eclipsed $10,000 U.S. per metric ton this week, a record high and up 250% from last March.
The NHL's leading scorer will be a game-time decision when the Leafs host Washington tonight. Auston Matthews is feeling under the weather. The Star Center has 59 goals so far this season. Toronto has lost two in a row in four of their last six games. The surging Capitals are in the second wild card spot.
The eyes of the world will be on Paris this summer, and France's most iconic landmark is almost ready. Renovation work on the Eiffel Tower is nearing completion for the upcoming Olympics and Paralympics. It will be at the center of one of the game's busiest sites. There is going to be a sports arena and a stadium to the south, and the opening ceremony to the north. All that, plus a magnificent view of the centre.
Don't go anywhere, because just ahead, you'll get to meet the sweetest pair of bear cubs you've ever seen, the fuzzy little duo settling into their new digs after their home was destroyed.
Tonight, taking on Big Tech.
45% of kids are spending roughly five hours a day on social media.
The Canadian school board is launching a multi-billion-dollar lawsuit against social media giants later on on CTV National News.
A reminder, the CTV News at Six podcast is available as a download every weeknight. And a special hello to those of you listening to the newscast live on NewsTalk 1010. In Manitoba, two orphaned bear cubs are settling into their new surroundings. These brothers arrived yesterday after their den was accidentally destroyed by heavy equipment. Their mother's whereabouts are unknown. A bear rescue group says the youngsters are doing well and have a good appetite. Oh, and they are full of energy, as you can see. The goal is to get them up to a healthy weight before being released back into the wild in the fall.
No, you just want to cuddle them. I love ending on a sweet note like that. And we have some good weather news, although tomorrow could be a little unsettled.
A little bit. You know what? We're all coming out of hibernation in a way, right? Although the winter wasn't like winter, winter. It still, you know, was cool enough, and we had that blast of snow just the other day that feels like it was a lifetime ago.[1743.10]